G'day, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 13th Board of Selectmen meeting. The agenda is as follows. 7:00 PM Citizens Input, 7:05 Board of Selectmen Planning Board. Appointment of Associate Member to the Planning Board, Jeff Peterson. 7:10 Complete Streets Policy Presentation Review and Possible Vote. 7:20 Classification Hearing Vote and Set FYE 2019 Tax Rate. 8:05 Public Hearing MIAA High School Super Bowls. 8:20 Appointment to Personnel Board, Heidi Crocteau. 8:25 Cable Television Advisory Committee Update, Mark Stopa. 8:40 Board of Selectmen to Approve Policy Transfer of K-9 Ownership. 8:50 Selectmen's Update. 8:55 Town Managers Update. 9:00 Assistant Town Managers Update, and then we have some action items. Mike, in honor of Veterans Day, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike. All right, 7:00 Citizens Input. Anybody? Mr. Cutler?
Good evening, everybody.
Bob?
How are you doing tonight?
Good.
Just want to take a minute just to tell you a little bit about the early voting process because it was the first time we had it here at the new town hall. But first, I want you guys all to know what really goes into running an election, not just from my office, but from all the help that we get from the school department, from the police department, the highway department. And even this year with the early voting, Amanda was very helpful with getting the word out there about it, and we even had a nice Halloween Day picture she sent out. It's not too late, don't be scared, come down and vote. So, I, you know, a lot of people don't understand the process of running an election, what goes into it, and what the early voting does. But for any of you that came up here, it went seamless just because of all the help from the people that I mentioned. And, you know, using this room turned out to be really awesome. We got so many compliments about the building. A lot of people hadn't been up to see the building, so it gave them a chance to come up here and see it in action. And for 90% of the time, we were in this room, and it worked out really well. For a couple of the short periods of time, we had to use the back conference room. It made it a little bit more difficult, especially on the finance department because we were right in front of them. But overall, it went really seamlessly. We had over 2,100 people take advantage of the early voting period, which also made it easier Election Day for, because any of that went down to the polls, it was really crazy down there with parking, and they had some parking incidents. But, so just wanted to let you guys know about that, and it worked really well. Very happy that it was here. And we're going to expect to see this every two years anyways, and, you know, some are pushing to get it for every election, but, you know, at least for every other November, we'll get to see that, so.
Excellent, excellent. Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Appreciate the update.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else here for Citizens Input? Seeing none. Appointment, Associate Member to the Planning Board. You guys want to come on up? I don't know much about this guy, so. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. I think technically we probably have to just call our meeting to order, and in order to do this, so, it being sometime best 7:00 PM, Planning Board will come to order for a meeting with the Selectmen to appoint Jeff Peterson as our Associate Member.
Excellent.
So, as many of you probably know, Jeff served on this board many years ago before he became a Selectman. I think he was even Chairman of the Board for a period of time. We lost Gordon because he had other time constraints and taking care of Pat and things of that nature, so we've been looking for someone, and Bill Buckley had mentioned to me that he thought Jeff might have some time to do the work, and we approached him, and he seems very amenable to it. So, we'd like to request that you, along with us, appoint him as our new Associate Member.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
As you may have heard, I have had some changes in career that have enabled me to have time on my hands. Kevin graciously inquired whether I would be interested in this, and I said certainly.
It's good to see you kind of getting back into things. That's good.
Yeah, it's been a long time. It's great.
No, you'd definitely be a great asset.
All right, great. So, move to appoint Jeff Peterson as Associate Member of the Planning Board for a term expiring May 1st, 2019.
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congrats.
Awesome.
Thank you very much for your confidence. Appreciate it.
Page.
We're not running this one. We get to sit in the background.
I'm doing.
Yeah. You guys are running.
I'll sit in the background.
You guys ready for the complete street?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Hello, gentlemen. Good evening. We are here for Complete Streets Policy Review. I'll introduce Mike Myers from TEC. Mike has, and TEC has extensive background in complete streets, as well as the Safe Routes to School program, which kind of go hand in hand as far as the construction projects and planning and working through DOT for funding. So, Paige, probably a year and a half now, you know, brought up the idea of complete streets and putting a policy in place, and we're at the point where we have a policy. We have some funding through the state, through MassDOT, to put the policy into place, and then actually put a prioritization plan together where we rank out 15 to 20 projects, which we can then apply for funding through the state at that point in time, once the policy's in place. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to go through his brief presentation, talk about complete streets a little in general, as well as specifically about the policy you guys have in front of you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Good evening, members of the board. As Chris mentioned, my name is Mike Myers. As one of the partners at TEC, one of my primary responsibilities and roles is to work directly with municipalities and try to help them take advantage of some of the great funding programs that are out there throughout the state, and this happens to be one of them. Okay. Just a little bit about us. We're about 50 people, a couple of offices. We're not a huge firm. We don't try to do everything. We've tried to focus on transportation infrastructure, so anything infrastructure, bridges, roadways, intersections. And it's through those projects, and as Chris mentioned, Safe Routes to School and Complete Streets, that we've been fortunate to become pretty familiar with complete streets. So, what are complete streets? Basically, they're taking a look at our roads today that were, at one time, primarily designed for vehicles, looking for opportunities through these six areas to try and improve the safety and accessibility for everyone that uses our roads. When the program first came out about three years ago, and working with a lot of communities, the misperception was, is that complete streets? That's not us. That's Boston. That's Cambridge. That's urban, because it looks like this. And really, the program was established so that all 351 communities could take advantage of it, and that's been done by each community doing it a different way, and doing it in a way that aligns with the character of your community, in a way that's context sensitive. So, as a result, a lot of communities, especially in this area, have taken advantage of the program, or half of them are enrolled, half have adopted policies, and about a quarter of them have received funding and constructed projects. Program is basically broken down by these three tiers. The first one is the adoption of the policy. Tier two is more or less a master plan of potential projects, and then tier three is applying for that construction funding. As part of tier one, these are five critical steps to try and get through that first tier. The town has already accomplished three of them, between attending the workshop, submitting a letter of intent to adopt a policy, and receiving the grant to perform the tier-two work. The last two steps would be your endorsement of the policy, and then DOT scoring the policy 80 or higher. The way DOT scores the policies is not very subjective at all. They do a nice job of laying out a worksheet of 10 questions that they ask, or they're looking for certain words, certain things to be included in the policy. We've gone through the policy with Chris and Paige, and it looks like it'll score over 80 pretty easily. If you've had a chance to go through the draft, there are some, basically these six components. The one component that we've highlighted to the right, in my opinion, is one of the most important components, because this is the exception section. This is where, when the town's looking at future public infrastructure projects, this is where you identify where those projects are exempt from the policy. For example, if DPW is looking to pave a mile of roadway, and it's a tight corridor with large trees, wetlands, things that can be impacted by adding bike lanes and such, that type of project would be exempt from the complete streets policy. This is just a high-level look at some of the tasks that are included within that master plan that our team has just started performing. This here is just a sample of DOT standard format for the master plan. You just see one project here, but this would identify a minimum of 15 projects in a minimum outlook of five years. Tier three, this is where you apply for, again, up to $400,000 that can be spent with pretty good flexibility. You could supplement an existing project, so if you had a locally funded project, you could supplement it with the $400,000. You could also apply for a standalone project, that was a $400,000 project, or look for smaller projects that added up to the $400,000. The state awards grants, excuse me, in two rounds, once in the spring, once in the fall. And again, if these projects are limited to that typical $400,000 or less, they're pretty limited in scale. They're smaller-scale projects. Top left, this is a project, some minor intersection improvements in Westford's historic town center, and bottom right, some intersection improvements in Westwood. Just to recap the next steps, as far as tier one goes, adoption of the policy, DOT scores the policy, and advancing the tier-two master plan, our team would establish a draft, look to meet with the public in December, maybe January after the holiday, and then finalize that master plan, get it into DOT, so that way we can ultimately apply for $400,000 by May 1st. This link here is just a good place to go and get some additional information if you're looking to learn a little more about the program and see how some of the other communities have taken advantage of it. That's it.
Any questions? The $400,000, is that a year or each grant cycle?
Once the project is, construction's completed, you could reapply.
Okay. So, conceivably, you could get two a year?
Yeah.
And you said you already started the prior utilization list of projects?
Yeah, we've, we had an initial meeting. TEC, Mike and his team put together a list of roughly 20 projects. Paige, Gabby, and I, we kind of met, tweaked some of the things that we want to see pushed and pulled off, some of the things that we're not going to touch at this point in time.
Just throw out a couple of ballpark ideas for projects, just to get a...
We had a couple of, I don't have the list with me, but we did have a couple of, you know, small pedestrian crossing-type safety improvements. I'm trying to look at some limited things around town center.
One of the things that we look at in that plan is where there are gaps in that pedestrian, that bicycle safety and access. So, there's a piece of Coacassus Street where the sidewalk ends and doesn't pick up again, you know, filling that gap of, you know, 400, 500 feet, putting a sidewalk in to continue that, so people aren't having to jump into the street to walk or push a baby car or something like that. So, Coacassus Street's one piece. You know, we do...
Some of the projects around the schools, trying to look at some limited projects around the schools.
So, would you kind of think that this would be, a lot of this stuff would be geared towards, like, sidewalks and ADA complacency and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's tied in, we're constrained with our roadways. You know, I don't see throwing bike lanes, you know, everywhere in town. We're just limited, you know, that we don't have that right-of-way, that width, to put, you know, safely two 12-foot vehicle lanes, plus, you know, a sidewalk plus a bike lane. So, it's kind of filling the gaps is what we've been looking at, addressing some of the ADA, the handicap ramp issues that we have in town. You know, there's a series on Mechanic Street where, you know, we know there's a vertical curb, you know, at it. Those are part of this list, and we're working on a master list of that elsewhere as well, so that we can address those.
Okay.
Just, and I know Paige initiated at the higher level, but has the Planning Board looked at this and got a chance to give an opinion or have meetings on it?
Not yet. No, not at this point in time.
They're here.
They are here.
They have seen it, and I can let the board speak for themselves. They have not formally voted. That's one of the reasons they're here, to sort of hear the whole presentation. We didn't want to bring Mike out to their meetings, so we are looking, you know, obviously they get to chime in and things.
We definitely have a couple meetings where we've refuted. It's been in our hands for a few weeks, you know. Ron Suss, John Ryan, talked about it in our last meeting, and Ron was there as well, Gary. So, we're pretty happy with where they're going with it. We think it's important because, not just for the safety reasons we're talking about, but if we want to be competitive with the other communities nearby with us and try to get that money, the only way we're going to qualify is by voting a policy and then following up with steps two and three. So, sooner or later, we'll, I don't want to say we'll be forced, but it'd be smarter for us to be ahead of the curve rather than wait and just get in line when there's a lot of other people out there already applying.
And I might say that we would have very difficult time getting grant that size through the tip, because we're way down on the totem pole in the tip. The tip covers the MAPC. We're in the MAPC. If we were in a, like, Serpette or something like that, it might be easier for us to get tip projects, but we, right now, it's near impossible. We just can't get the scores. We don't have the urban transportation facilities that other cities and towns have around us. And this is an opportunity to get some decent money for projects that are worthy.
Just a quick question on your experience at the TEC, working with other communities that have looked to go into complete streets and decided not to do it. I know there are some communities out there. Generally, why wouldn't they not, some of the negative reasons?
That's a good question. If they just, I don't particularly see any real negative, because there's a lot of flexibility in your policy. So, it allows you to look at the projects and look at implementing complete streets to the maximum extent practical. The state is, would provide the town with the money and allow you to manage it, and manage the project locally. It doesn't have to go into DOT reviews or anything through design, so, I mean, all honestly, I don't see any negative to being a part of the program.
So, where would that subjectivity comes in? If a developer comes in and wants to improve, they put a subdivision road in or do something? When you say you have that subjectivity to say yes or no, is that the...
That would be through the Planning Board.
Okay, so not the Selectmen or zoning, it would be at the...
Through the Planning Board, yep. Yeah, I think the way the policy's written now is through Public Works for public infrastructure and through the Planning Board for private.
Just in response to Jim's question, I think a number of communities were skeptical about the program when it first came out, because there was a lot of skepticism about how it was going to be applied and were we going to be urbanized by the program. I think we all became a lot more knowledgeable about how the program works and also watched with great intent about what was going on around us, and we were actually seeing a lot of communities really benefit by the program. And so now, we're, we're not in first in line, we're sort of like the middle of the pack, and I think now is a good time for us. Now that we've seen a lot of people benefit by the program, I think we're in a better position to support it.
With the whole policy and then the grant application and all that, do they take, the state take into consideration, like, ongoing maintenance of road sidewalks? Does that weigh in on whether you get a good-size grant or not?
Yeah, I think the policy does recognize looking at opportunities through maintenance to try and implement the policy. Does that answer?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if, you know, we, okay, we checked the box, we have the policy, we're good to go, or do they look at other things?
What they're really looking for, those six, those six areas, they're looking at, you know, are we addressing those six needs? Safety for all users, pedestrian mobility, ADA accessibility, bicycle mobility, vehicular and transit. You know, how many of those needs can we touch on within a project? So, where we're limited on, in particular, bicycle mobility, as Chris mentioned, not looking to add bike lanes everywhere, but if we could modify, make a limited improvement to an intersection, address vehicular, ADA, pedestrian, possibly transit, that's a good project, because you're touching a lot of those needs.
And these funds are just for infrastructure work?
They are. Yeah, just for the construction.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm good. I was skeptical at first, but I think the exceptions gives the town an out in a lot of instances, whereas I think when it was first proposed, you didn't have the ability for the exceptions. But I think that's an important part of this.
Yeah, this is, this is not the DOT policy. This is, we have that flexibility. This policy really makes us look at everything when we're doing roadwork, when we're repaving, when we're looking at sidewalks. It, you know, puts it on us to make sure we're looking at all those aspects when we're spending, spending that money, and it allows us to, you know, apply for that funding through the state.
So, you guys looking for us to approve this tonight?
We would ask a vote to let us go to the next step.
The board comfortable in voting it tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
With the caveat, we're not, we don't have the expertise to look at the paragraphs and look at the process. I'd feel much more comfortable if the Planning Board had an opportunity to look at this and tweak it, just because I think we're looking at a board that is not in the trenches of planning and infrastructure, and you've got a very versed Planning Board with some good associates and members, longtime members. Having said that, I defer to Paige, because you work with them all the time if you're comfortable with this, and you can speak on behalf of them that they wouldn't want to change anything, but I think it's worth a discussion.
They've had it many times. They've had lots of opportunity to change this, so...
Oh, they've actually had, you've seen the wording of this?
We've had this grant policy in front of us, yeah.
Okay.
Flexibility, Jim, that was one of our reluctance points, but now that the flexibility has been explained to us, I think, why not get in the line, so to speak, get in the line and have an opportunity to have some funding for some projects that are spot improvements? They tend to get overlooked, you know, we're all looking for larger, we tend to look for larger appropriations for bigger projects, and the spot improvements go a sudden and don't get done. Seems perfect for a number of spot improvements brought into one small contract.
Okay. Yeah, I misunderstood. I didn't know you had the text in front of you, and you had a chance to look at it.
So, there's nothing in it that you want to add, delete, or...
I don't think we, you know, the last discussion we had, the last Planning Board meeting, we didn't find anything that we thought was necessary to remove or add to.
Okay, good.
All right. Lee, you want to make a motion?
So, yeah, move to accept the complete streets policy as presented?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Being that it's after 7:20, classification hearing. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Public notice to be read.
All right. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough will hold a public hearing in the Andrew A. Gala Junior Meeting Room at the Foxborough Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 7:20 PM with the Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor, the Finance Director to review property valuations and the total values of all property, subject to taxation in each of the four classes of real property as defined by law. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the adoption of a residential factor and then determine within the prescribed limits calculated by the Department of Revenue what percentage of the tax burden is to be borne by each property class. The Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor, and the Finance Director will provide information and data relevant to making these policy decisions, including the fiscal effort of the available alternatives. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and will have the right to provide oral and written comments or suggestions.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you want to open your meeting?
Open the meeting, Board of Assessors, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Great. Do we have a few extra hard copies if somebody wants to work from paper?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind. It's just kind of small. Just so everybody at home knows names, you want to just tell everybody?
My name's Thomas Buckley, Chairman of the Board of the Selectmen.
Thank you.
Rob O'Donnell.
Laurie Rudd, I'm sorry, Hannah, Laurie Rudd, another member, it was unable to attend the meeting tonight.
Senator Simons, Chief Assessor.
Thank you. Great. So, this hearing is a required touchstone along the way to having the town's tax rate set and ultimately approved by the Department of Revenue. Once the classification decision is made by the Board, the last components of the documentation will be forwarded to the Department of Revenue for final review. Assuming everything is in order, we're looking to receive a quick approval, which will allow us to mail our third and fourth quarter tax bills by the end of December with a February 1 and May 1 due dates. If it pleases the Board, the easiest way to go through a lot of this dense information is just to read the, go through the text, the three pages, executive summary, if that pleases the Board. Probably, I know you probably have already reviewed it, it's probably more helpful for anybody who might be watching.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, the fiscal '19 tax levy, which is the year that we're in right now, is increasing by 2.3 million, or 4.82% to 49.97 million, and the increase is comprised of the following. 2.42% or 1.16 million as allowed by Prop 2.5, and it's not a full 2.5% because you can't increase, you cannot increase on the debt exclusions, so it's effectively 2.42. And then we've got a 14-basis-point or 66,000 decrease in excluded debt due to the scheduled amortization of existing debt and no new debt. So, the total increase, tax increase related to free existing property is a net 2.28% or 1.09 million, and new growth taxes add 2.53% to the levy or 1.2 million. And I want to thank the Board and Hannah for all the excellent and hard work in reeling that in. It is quite an effort to scrub all of the building permits and review everything and get the Department of Local Assessment to agree. So, another 1.2 million in new taxes as a result.
Is that all on new construction updates and stuff like that?
Yeah, all new, all new. So, we do continue to tax to the limits allowed by Prop 2.5, as you know. However, Foxborough has no general overrides built into the levy, whereas over 74% now, because I believe that just passed 6.5 million override, over 74%, 74% of all the municipalities in the state do have general overrides, and they rely on them. 11 of the 15 area communities have an average additional general override levy capacity of 4.6 million. So, obviously, the town doesn't have that, but the other communities do, as relates to property values, fiscal '19 property values. So, fiscal '19 total taxable property value increased by 3.48% or 170... However, Foxborough has no general overrides built into the levy, whereas over 74% now, because I believe North Attleboro just passed 6.5 million override, over 74% of all the municipalities in the state do have general overrides and they rely on them. 11 of the 15 area communities have an average additional general override levy capacity of 4.6 million. So obviously, the town doesn't have that, but the other communities do. As it relates to property values, fiscal '19 property values. So fiscal '19 total taxable property value increased by 3.48% or 107.8 million. Average single-family residential values, including condos, increased just over 3%. And average commercial, industrial, and personal property, otherwise known as CIP, otherwise known as business, classes of property actually decreased by just less than a percent, 0.76%. The average single-family property, including condominiums, has increased in fiscal '19 by 12.8,000 to 438,000. For the average single-family property excluding condos, has increased by a little bit more, by 13,000 to 454,500. The residential class of property, unadjusted, totals 78.03% of all property value, which remains significantly higher than the 2010 baseline year. And I think it's important to, we refer to this every year, it's important to refresh on what the 2010 baseline year means. In 2010, fiscal 2010, that was the first year where we were fully taxing a significant amount of new growth, a mix of business and residential in the town. So that would include Patriot Place, Chestnut Green, which is mixed-use, there's some commercial, residential, and then the Lodge, which is apartments, so therefore classified as residential. So that's the year that we had a significant increase to the town's property value base, and that is deemed to be sort of a good baseline year for the town, given that it was, the growth was also pretty evenly split. The remaining 21.97% of property value is associated with the business property classes, commercial, industrial, and personal. And over the last 90 years, residential property has increased from a low of 72.8% in fiscal '10 of total valuation to the current 78.03. This shift results in the continuing trend of more of the tax burden falling on residential taxpayers than on business payers if it weren't for the, for a split tax rate. However, in fiscal '12, the Board of Selectmen equalized this trend by splitting the tax rate, which had the effect of maintaining the tax burden split of fiscal '10. If the town reverted to a single rate this year, the tax impact to all residential taxpayers resulting from the nine-year trend in value shifting away from business taxpayers would be 2.6 million. So there'd be additional 2.6 million absorbed by residential if we just went back to a single tax rate. Regarding the tax rate, assuming no split tax rate, the tax rate per thousand in assessed value would increase by 6.86% or $1 to $15.57 for residential classes, and it would decrease by 14.2% or $2.58 a thousand for business classes or property. So that's if we went back to a single rate. Assuming the current split was to be maintained, the residential tax rate would decrease by seven cents, I'm sorry, would increase by seven cents to 14.64, and the business rate would increase 72 cents to 18.87. So what we've done historically since we've moved into this territory of split tax rates over the last eight cycles is the Board of Assessors and Chief Assessor, you know, look at various options. So I'm just going to roll through the four primary options that we've been looking at. First being assuming a single tax rate, the second being assuming that the current split of burden is maintained, the third is assuming a reduced split that equalized the tax increase percentage, and then a fourth one, assuming the originally targeted split. So assuming a single tax rate, the average single-family tax, and I'm just going to do including condominiums, I'm not going to do with the excluding condos, just to be a little bit more efficient here. The average single-family tax, assuming a single tax rate, would increase by over 10%, 10.09%, or $625 to 6,820. And the average CIP tax, or business tax, would decline by 13.3% or $1,720 to $11,220. If the current split were to be maintained, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by 3.52% or a $218 increase to $6,413. The average business tax would increase by 5.08% or by $658 to $13,598. Assuming a split, a reduced split from where we are today, that equalizes the tax increase percentage, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by 3.94% or $244 to 6,439. The average business tax would increase by 3.97% or $514 to $13,454. Assuming the originally targeted split, again, back in 2010 and 2012, and again in 2014, maintaining that historical ratio, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by 2.74% or $170 to 6,365. And the average business tax would increase by 7.37% or $953 to $13,893. In this fiscal year, assuming a single tax rate, the top 12 taxpayers comprise 16.4% or 8.18 million of the tax levy. And total business taxpayers would comprise 21.96% or 10.97 million of the tax levy. Final slide here. The area-community comparisons, always important to see where Foxborough stands in relation to our neighbors. So, and what we've done historically is draw a circle around Foxborough and capture 15 other towns. Foxborough making the 16th so you can separate the comparisons into quartiles. But, and this comparison is for fiscal '18, not '19, because everybody's still developing their fiscal '19 tax rates, but it's still all, still all relative. So Foxborough's fiscal '18 total valuation of single-family homes, 1.91 billion, is 15.9% or 361 million less than the FY '18 average of the 15-area communities. They were 2.27 billion. So just to put that into context, if the town were to be able to tax an additional $361 million in residential property, that would generate another $5.6 million in tax revenue to the town. So Foxborough, for a variety of reasons, is slightly disadvantaged in comparison to generate revenue because we just don't have as much residential property to tax. And that's a function of the number of parcels. On fiscal '18, the total number of single-family parcels was 4,324, also about 16% less than the average of the 15-area communities, 5,166. Foxborough's FY '18 average single-family valuation of 441,500 is slightly higher than the average for the 15-area communities, 0.35% or 35 basis points higher. So our property values are commensurate with our neighbors, because we don't have as much property to levy a tax against. Foxborough's average FY '18 average single-family tax bill was $6,432, and it's 3.2% lower than the average of the 15-area communities of 6,645. And that's a function of two things. First, it's a function of the fact that the town has no general overrides, which is a good thing. And then second is the fact that the Board has been voting a split rate to equalize the burden between the classes. Nine of the 15-area communities adopted a split tax rate in fiscal '18, and that's been pretty consistent over the last few years. I think the one exception is North Attleboro has popped in to split tax rate and out, and my understanding is they're considering, considering doing that again, given their general override to try to share the, push the burden, a little bit more of the burden onto the business. The fiscal '18 average commercial tax rate, commercial tax rate of the 15 surrounding communities is 1997 per thousand, with Foxborough $1.62 less than that at $18.15. So Foxborough certainly is, in perspective of the, what the commercial tax rate is, still very competitive with our neighbors in that regard. And then the option, so shifting the fiscal '19 tax burden from residential to business, the Board of Selectmen has the option to either elect a single tax rate or reestablish a split tax rate. Shifts in the residential factor, which is the technical term for the number that gets applied to shift the burden, are allowed for Town of Foxborough of up to just over 14%. 14.08% of the burden could be shifted by the Board. So a, if that were to happen, the residential tax bill would be reduced by $965 and change. And conversely, the average business tax bill would rise by $5,606 and change. A minimum shift would, 0.28%, would allow residential tax bill to be reduced by $17 and change. Business tax would increase $115.30 on average and change. A tax increase equalizing the shift, meaning equalizing the percentage tax increase, would shift 5.6% of the burden from residential to business and would reduce the average residential tax bill by $383.65, and conversely, increase the average business tax bill by 2,023.86 compared to a single rate. A 5.97% shift of the burden would maintain the current split and reduce the average residential tax bill by about another $27 to, by $410.11, reduce residential by that amount, and conversely, increase the average business tax bill by 2,037.98. So both in a very, very tight range. Returning to the targeted split, a 6.7% shift would be required, and that would reduce the average residential tax bill by $458 and change, and conversely, increase the business tax bill by 2,067.3 and change. And at this point in time, is there specific questions on this? You can always come back to it. Turn it over to the Board of Assessors to discuss the changes in valuation and kind of what their recommendation is.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for all this hard work, too. After all these years, it's still overwhelming sometimes. So last week, we, the Board of Assessors did have a meeting. There were three members there. We did vote at that meeting, 3 to 0 to recommend a split rate at that time. We did not come up with what we were recommending at that point. We were waiting to digest a lot of this information, and I will let you know what our recommendation is at the end. But I just wanted to tell you, you know, why we did that and how we got to where we are today. So as Randy explained, the continuing trend and the widening gap between the business values and the residential values, that gap is still growing. And the real answer is, is we don't know why. The INEs that are coming in, that are required by the business communities are coming in, are coming in and they're actually showing a decrease in their values. We can't figure, you know, we don't know why that is. We're getting about 85% of the businesses are reporting back to us. The other 15% using different methods to capture the values of those specific parcels in the community. You can use those by a specific business entity, a business office building, and if another office building is not submitting their INEs, Hannah's able to use those to create a value that is comparable. So we're comfortable with the numbers we have, but we really don't know why the values of the businesses. Looking back on that, though, and we're looking at, you know, when we went to the split rate, which is still controversial as we sit here today, you know, I can confidently say that, you know, I don't think that anybody at that time made a wrong decision in going that route. The fact is, is you can look in the community today and you can look at the businesses that are coming in. You have the new 150,000, 110,000 square foot Partners Building being built, the Freedom Tunnel, which is the sky, the parachute simulator, that's been approved. The 50 apartment buildings on Wall Street have been approved. So there's people coming to town, they're not being scared away about, by our split rate. There's a new business office building being built up on the Net Road. So you just look across the community and you can see that people want to come here. There is, you can go on any of the, and Rob can attest to this, you can go on Zillow or Railto.com or any of those MLS listings, there's no, nobody, there's no inventory out there. The houses go on the market, people want to come here. So I don't believe, honestly, that our split rate is scaring anybody coming to this town. Obviously, people want to be here, and we encourage that. And so one of the other things that we were talking about, too, is, and even last year, it was heard loud and clear that, you know, we want to try to give the seniors some relief. And what we did as a Board, we came up and we relaxed some of the requirements for some of the programs that are out there, changed the age requirements, the income requirements, and we changed some of those things. And honestly, we did not get any huge influx of applications for relief, any major relief, which is a good thing, but we didn't really see that happening. One of the positive things is the, what is it, the Senior Tax Work Off Program. That has been a success. Seniors want to come, they want to work that off. We were able to raise that from $1,200 to $1,500 a year. One of the things that want to re-educate the public out there, too, is if you have somebody who is physically unable to come and volunteer in the lobby or things like that, you can have somebody else do that work for you and you would get that credit. I just wanted to throw that in there because that may not be known. But looking at all those things, Randy talked about servicing, the taxing to the levy limit that we do now, and we're servicing the entire Borough School project within that with no override, which I think is huge. I mean, you just have to pick up the Sun Chronicle and see all the other communities around us struggling with overrides and things like that. And over five years, I think we're going to save about 2.7% savings per year on just on that one aspect. Another thing that's going to help us with some of these values, and we're looking at the values residential and businesses, next year is a reval year for us. And that'll allow us to validate a lot of our numbers by, you know, getting really into every single parcel in the community and really validating those numbers. And that's both business and residential. One of the good things is that the state requires, and it has required, a triennial, so every three years it had to be done. But now after, next year, we only have to do it every, every five years or every quinquennial.
I knew he was going to work that word in.
But that's actually really helps out us. And one aspect is, is that, you know, the cost savings that, for every community in the Commonwealth, we only have to do that every five years now. So looking back at that, so one of the other things, the last thing I'll talk about real quickly is, is the, one of the things that we talked about as a Board last week was, is we're looking at this, again, you know, the split tax rate aspect of this, and we were wondering, is it because we're adding more business? Is it, are we adding more residential? What is it? What is driving these numbers? So Randy actually went back to fiscal year 11 and did an analysis on the new growth over that time period, and it really came up to residential was at 48%, and the CIP or the business was 52%. So it wasn't, it wasn't that we got inundated with more residential and the business dropped or vice versa. It was pretty even going right across the board. So again, we have no answer for you on why the business values are dropping. Again, it's required by the business community to supply us with that information. We can validate that to, for some extent, but, you know, that's just one of those things that we just keep, keep our eyes on it and trying to figure it out. that we just keep, keep our eyes on it and trying to figure it out. So as of our meeting this afternoon, well, this afternoon at five-thirty, so, as a vote of two to zero, if you go to page fifteen in your packet, and I will let you know, so to find it quickly, on the left-hand side, you will see the one point one nine nine CIP shift. The official wording is the residential factor of zero point nine four four. We really looked at that again because historically, the Board of Assessors has always looked at this as a, you know, basically just a team. It's the residential's, it's the business, it's working together and sharing that burden the same, and that would raise both of their tax rates by the same percentage. You're looking at residential would raise, would go up three point nine four percent, and the total CIP, commercial, industrial, and personal property by three point nine seven percent. Again, we've done that ever since the split. That's the way the board looks at that, again, just to share the burden of everybody equally. The Board of Selectmen have accepted that recommendation every year except one, and that was the only time that that's ever happened. But that is our recommendation, and we did, again, vote two to zero on that.
Any questions from anybody on the board?
If you, if you look at page seven, you'll actually see the, some of the details that the Board of Assessors just laid out in terms of the tax bill increases associated with that, that recommendation, the reduced split, equalized tax increase percentage.
I don't, I didn't look through this, but has that been a trend the last few years?
Yes.
I think that was the original precipice for us to go with the split because the brick and mortar went down, the residential went up. If we kept the same rate, we would have put the burden on the residential.
Exactly.
But I do remember a lot of the discussion back then was we were trying, we were going to try to get it back to where it was. And the trend keeps going.
Yeah, and I think if you look at Randy's, I think it was page, this one, page sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And I understand, and that's been the Board of Selectmen's goal, you know, a lot of members over the past years to try to get that back to that. We are throttling it back towards the single. Honestly, you're still waiting for that ball to drop on Route One. That's reality. I know nothing. I don't know what's going on up there. I don't know anything. We just have to assume that that's not happening tomorrow. So we're looking at this, that, you know, that's the way we have to move forward with the values. If that does, if it comes and it, and they turn a shovel and it goes forward, I think that's going to be a game changer for us. And I think Randy has said that multiple times in multiple different meetings, that we'll be able to relook at a lot of these different things. And then the board will really be, at that time, look to say, okay, now where are we going to shift the burden? Maybe you'd be able to give the residents back that even more of a relief or equalize it out. But that would be when that time comes. And supposedly, it's going to happen. I just don't know when.
Yeah, it was interesting. I mean, you had touched on it earlier, that when you split the rate, the concern was the businesses were going to run to the surrounding fifteen communities, which didn't happen. I think the one year that we didn't take your recommendation, we kind of split the difference, that didn't seem to have a big effect either, one way or the other. We didn't get the hate mail with the thank yous. It was such an unskilled amount. But it seems like nothing we've done since two thousand and ten up to now has shaken up anything, and the trend keeps, the residential, like you said, there's no stock available, the prices keep going up. It sounds like you're not getting a full answer of what the businesses are valued because they have to report it themselves to you?
Well, no, we're getting eighty-five percent, so you're getting, you're getting, we're getting a big sample of money, of that information back.
Self-reporting.
Yeah, it is self-reporting, absolutely. And those who don't, so you're looking at the fifteen percent who don't, Hana does fine them. She actually mentioned that she's collecting a lot of money off of that, but there is a mechanism to fine the business for not filling out that paperwork. You know, they're required by law to do it and supply us with that information, but we're at the mercy of that information that comes in.
One other side note, I'm sure everybody on the board knows it, but maybe not everybody at home, the decision you make tonight doesn't increase or decrease the amount of tax. It's likely that it just splits the tax burden amongst residential and business. There's no additional revenue to talk about. It's who's going to pay what.
Now, when you mentioned every three years, every five years, reevaluation, do you reevaluate all the businesses, too, through that, or is it just the residential?
Everything gets, yes. Personal property, real estate, and commercial industrial properties, you know, all properties they have.
Have you guys had luck getting into these businesses and?
Oh, yeah. People have been very good.
Okay. Does everything usually check out from what they're self-reporting?
Well, the self-reporting is on the market rents, the expenses, and the capitalization rate, that comes all in, in fact, so, so it's all based on market, on what the market will bear for rents and stuff. So if you look at a office building, let's say you have Class A, and then you have just like maybe a two-story office building, and maybe first floor is retail, second floor is office, all of these would have a different market rent, okay? And the expense ratio for each building would be different, too. So, you know, that's what they are looking for. And then it's backed up by a cost approach and a market approach. So we have three approaches to value, to come up with that.
Anybody else on the board have any?
So the rate you're recommending is?
The residential factor of zero point nine four four.
And if the board would take a vote to affirm that, that's how you would vote it? You would vote a residential factor of zero point nine four four?
This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience have anything to weigh in on anything? Seeing none, who want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, sure. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Still shaking my notes on my next motion.
Yeah, sure. Motion made. Any further discussions to close the public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Now I got my next motion already.
There you go.
All right, so move to approve the residential factor of zero point nine four four zero zero zero.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Yeah, leave it with Amanda, you can do it after.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, everyone. Nice job, guys and ladies.
All right. So you gained a little bit of time. We're five minutes before the public hearing, so maybe we'll, let's knock out a couple of action items.
Sure. So the first one, move to approve public event application for caroling on the Common on December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, from five P.M. until nine P.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the public event application to place holiday decorations on the Common on November twenty-fourth from nine A.M. until twelve P.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope, I was already getting my vote.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you to the J.C.s and Linda, who's here tonight, for both of those.
Move to approve the public event application for the tree lighting on the Common to take place on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, from four P.M. until six-thirty P.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve Scorpion Bar's request of an extension of hours of operation on New Year's Eve, which is December thirty-first, to allow customers on premises up until one thirty A.M. with no alcohol being served after twelve forty A.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
I thought that town didn't allow anything after twelve.
This is the first one I remember coming in that late, twelve forty.
Yeah, what is the, I think it's twelve thirty, isn't it?
Twelve thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this says no alcohol served after twelve forty.
I thought it was midnight, actually, if they, if they asked for a one o'clock extension.
Usually, it's twelve thirty, but if you go to the extension, it's one hour after close. So it should be, I thought twelve thirty was the number, if I'm not mistaken.
So you'll revise that to twelve thirty?
Yeah, I'm pretty positive it's twelve thirty.
I'm pretty sure that as well. I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
Chief, you don't happen to know alcohol was there?
Because it's twelve thirty, though. Twelve thirty.
Okay. So let me just amend that. Move to approve Scorpion Bar's request of an extension of hours of operation on New Year's Eve, December thirty-first, to allow customers on premises up until one thirty A.M. with no alcohol being served after twelve thirty A.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve Whole House Group LLC doing business as Battle Road Brewing Company, one-day entertainment license application for December seventh, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve P.M. until eleven P.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve Whole House Group LLC doing business as Battle Road Brewing Company, one-day wine and malt license application for December seventh, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve P.M. until eleven P.M.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
So, back to that whole brewer licenses, what's the difference here?
In terms of what?
Wine and malt.
One day, one day.
They're not manufacturing it, they're just bringing it in and serving it.
Okay.
Is that the difference you're thinking of?
Yeah, I guess so. Was this not one of the dates we approved before? I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't.
Like, why, just this, this was not one of them? Because it wasn't a home game then, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clarify, with all those dates we approved before, how this one different?
So, motion made, seconded. Those discussion, all those in favor? All right, we're at eight oh five, so why don't we open up the public hearing?
Ready to read?
Yep.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter two twenty-nine, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, beginning at eight oh five P.M. in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, Forty Cell Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC, for the two thousand and eighteen MIAA High School Super Bowls. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good evening.
So I'm Phil Bode Fuoco, representing Craft Sports and Entertainment. We're honored to host the high school championships again, pending your approval tonight, to give the athletes of these sixteen schools an opportunity to play at Gillette Stadium and enjoy that, playing in a professional stadium experience that we've provided for the last decade here. So the games are scheduled, two games on Friday night, November thirtieth, and six games on Saturday, December first. Last year was the first year that we held the Friday night, two games, and then Saturday, we've been hosting the six games for, for ten years now. The Friday night games are scheduled for five o'clock and seven-thirty, with gates opening at four o'clock, and basically lots opening at four o'clock as well. And then the lots closing, the second game should end somewhere around nine o'clock, nine fifteen-ish, depending on the style of play of the teams. If they're throwing the ball a lot and dropping it, the clock stops, it'll be a little longer. If they're running the ball, we'll be out of there quicker. And then Saturday, the first game is scheduled for nine A.M. with parking lots and gates opening at eight A.M., and the last game is scheduled for eight P.M. And that should end around nine thirty, and then we'll be clear out of the stadium by ten o'clock, ten fifteen-ish or so. Ticket prices are the same as they've been for years now, seventeen dollars for adults, fourteen dollars for students and senior citizens and all. Five and under children are admitted for, for free. We seat people only on the east side of the stadium. There's nobody sitting on the west side. We do not sell club seats, so it's only the one-hundred level bowl. And there are two or three suites open during the day, and we primarily are on the east side for them as well. The teams arrive, they, they warm up in the, in the fieldhouse, we walk them over to the stadium, let them compete, conduct the award ceremony, the teams leave. For the most part, their fans leave as well, so it's, it's really not a fan base that arrives for the first game and stays for the whole day. It's really a transitional fan base that follows their teams. And so throughout the day on, on Saturday, we expect somewhere in the eighteen thousand range, but really only at the most four thousand or so at any one time during the day. Friday night, last year, we tried to keep some of the local teams there, so created a real good atmosphere. We may be through the day, through the Friday night, seven to eight thousand from an attendance standpoint as well on that Friday night. We had no, no issues last year. It meshed well with Patriot Place on, on that Friday night, and we thought it was a great atmosphere, and that's why we're willing to do it again.
George?
Hi, George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee. We reviewed the application. Actually, I would say it's a real feel-good event in terms of the stadium donating all of their services, and all the proceeds would go to the state, the MIAA. Access-wise, vehicle access will be through the main gates, so at regular Patriot Place gates, and there'll be no access on North Street. Police and fire saw no issues with it, and we recommend for approval.
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public have anything? Seeing none, you want to close the public hearing?
Sure, move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Anybody on the board have any questions?
No, it's a great thing you guys do.
I have one clerical question to clean up. I think it might have been a mistake in the letter we sent back to Dan on this. You're not serving alcohol at these, right?
No, there's no alcohol served.
There must have been a typo in that letter, Bill, that says something about we would discuss the alcohol policies, so disregard that. We didn't think you were.
No, there's no alcohol. Those of them.
Okay. All right, you want to make a motion?
Sure, move to approve NPS LLC, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC, discussion vote MIAA Super Bowls at Gillette Stadium, November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, through December first, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Congrats.
Thank you.
How'd everything go with UMass this weekend?
It went well. I mean, it's, unfortunately, they didn't win the game, but, but it was a great, the band day was great. You know, I said to some people that, that the high school Super Bowls, we will have two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty or so football players playing there that day, and really, those are, you know, our future fans, if you will. But... day, and really, those are, you know, our future fans, if you will. But last Saturday, we had 3,500 high school band members there, and they're also our future fans and, and all, and so we're really proud of that event, and, and that we were able to provide those kids that opportunity to, to play their instruments on, on the stadium field, and there are, a lot of them are Patriots fans as, as it is, so it's a thrill for them as well. So, you put that in perspective. So, it, it, the day went very well.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent.
All right, thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, George.
See you, George.
Is Heidi here? Do we, anybody from the personnel board? Oh, there you are. I didn't even see you over there.
Hi, bud.
Good beauty.
Here, I'm supposed to sit down?
Yeah, yep. Are you training him?
This is, yeah, this is my daughter's service project, but you know how that goes.
Yeah, I did, I did three of them. My daughter did train three service dogs that my wife and I took care of, yes. I know exactly how it goes.
So, I said, "Oh, how's she doing? What have you done with her?" "Oh, I've, I've been studying," and I said, "All right, well, I'll take her to my meeting." And that'll be her practice.
Good so far.
She's been good.
Doing right?
All right.
Not as good as Deb. I mean, Sue.
Sue.
Sue. All right, so you want to just tell everybody at home who you are and what you want to do there?
Sure. My name is Heidi Proctor. Live in Foxborough, 13 years. Currently work locally as a project manager. Served four-year terms on AdCom, and was asked to participate in the Personnel Wage Board. So, other than Penny, I'm not, don't have any other volunteer obligations, so I'm sure I'd, I'd love to.
There you go. Okay. Well, thanks for all that you've done, stepping up. Anybody from the board have any questions?
That was a marathon.
It was, we did it.
Finished it?
We did it. We did it, yeah. So, a few friends and I just ran the New York Marathon. But, my, I drove my car, all of us in our car, and my daughter just got her license, and she put gas in my car right before I went, but she put diesel in my gas.
Ooh.
So, there was a little bump in the road before and after the marathon.
Oh, my goodness.
$1,400 later, I'm back on the road.
Oops.
I told her, "Tell everybody, because that could happen really to anybody," so.
All right, you want to make a motion?
I didn't know, that wasn't a loaded question. I had no idea.
Expensive trip.
Move to approve the appointment of Heidi Proctor to the Personnel Board for a term beginning November 13th, 2018, and expiring the 1st, 2020.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Cherry, can I just make a comment? I'm thrilled to have Heidi join Personnel Board. I wish it were sooner rather than as I exit, but the next meeting is November 27th, so you'll be, if you're available, you'll be an official voting member. And the Board has, last year had a very robust year of implement, of policy development and implementation, and we, Mike and I attended an HR conference that was the top 10 policies every municipality should have, and we had nine of them. So, you can bet, policy number 10 is going to be on the agenda for the 27th, so.
How many did we have before you arrived?
One. So, we're thrilled to have you, a great addition to the team. Thank you. And you too.
Working on that.
I'm thrilled.
She's like, "Please don't bring it."
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Thanks, Heidi.
Bye, Penny.
All right, next up, Cable Advisory. Advisory Committee update. Mark, you want to come up, and Mike, or anybody else? Paul, you've been here since quarter or seven. Come on up.
Sit down, Paul.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Mark Stopa, and I have the dubious distinction of being the chairperson of the Foxborough Cable Television Advisory Committee. Ostensibly, we wanted to update the Board of Selectmen as to the status of Comcast negotiations for the renewal of, of that license, but we actually have a more important issue, a more time-sensitive issue that we want to address tonight, and then, as time permits, I'll, I'll add some comments about the status of the negotiations. But perhaps maybe as a, for those watching on television, and for anybody else who doesn't really know the backdrop of all this, we are a Selectmen-appointed committee. Our primary purpose is to handle the two cable franchise licenses in the town, that's Comcast and Verizon. The relationship between the town and the cable television companies is one of a landlord-tenant relationship. We own the poles, the rights-of-way, and they seek to have access, so for us giving that access, they pay us money. You guys are the issuing authority and approve any final determination on, or approval or deny of the final licensing. We would like to come back in about a month and perhaps give you a more thorough update on the license status and some particular issues we're having there. But again, as I said, tonight, we want to bring to your attention a problem with some proposed regulations out of the FCC, and hopefully, you, you all got in your packets, some materials. There was a letter that was an overview of that. There was a proposed comments of the Town of Foxborough Board of Selectmen, as well as comments that were presented to the FCC by the Massachusetts Municipal Association and 10 senators from the United States Senate. The, the primary concern with their, their proposed regulations are that, it's really vague language, and the concern is that, once it gets passed, and oftentimes, things get passed in, in Washington DC without a lot of thought, and then they go back and fix it. Well, it's the "go back and fix it" part that's a real problem, because if we're going to negotiate a new deal with Comcast, we don't want to negotiate the deal and have them come back and say, "Oh, that's terrific, but we provide you all these other services, and by rule from the FCC, we now get to charge you back, and that, all that money we were going to pay you, we don't actually owe you anything." Or worse, we owe them money for the privilege of, of being in the town. So, we thought it very, very important to join in the opposition to this regulation, and I apologize if it was presumptuous to give you a proposed comments from the Board of Selectmen. However, because this is due by midnight tomorrow night, the 14th, there wasn't time for post-meeting back and forth. So, I apologize for that, but it was, it was necessary, given the timing. Obviously, it's, it's a funding, and the funding cuts sort of a problem with the, the regulations. We're concerned that it'll be far-reaching, so for instance, they, they donate certain number of cable boxes to the town for town facilities. If that regulation goes through, we're pretty sure that that'll give them the opportunity to charge back for that. If we ultimately get the high-definition television channel or channels, and the electronic programming guide, that they'll see that as a service provided to the town and look to charge us back for that. This is not to say that we can't try to put language in the renewal contracts to try to protect us against this. We just like not to be in a position of having to do that. So, with that, I, I gave you the, the information. I'll open it to you for any questions on that, and, and I think this specific request tonight is that, that you agree that this is important, number one, and that the comments or aversion of those comments as proposed be authorized and signed by the Board of Selectmen, so it can be submitted by close of business tomorrow night. So, with that, I'll, I'll pause and allow us to deal with that issue. In time permitting, I'll, I'll give you further update.
Mr. Chairman, I just, this is a very timely issue, Mark, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. This past week, I was in Los Angeles for the National League of Cities meeting, and I will tell you that the, the 50 state league directors were met for breakfast on Thursday morning, and I attended that meeting, and this was the number-one issue on their, on their agenda. They're very, very, very much concerned about this, and they encouraged all of us to go back to our cities and towns and ask for support for this particular issue. What's happened is that you have a Republican president and agenda for the, for the FCC, and, and there is a lot of support for them to pass this legislation and get this through, or to pass the regulations to get this through, which would effectively do, would effectively strip the, the ability of the cities and towns to, to have the, the various separations between the, the revenue, which is about a 5% revenue factor that you have here in the license right now, and take that revenue piece, and then it would be all-encompassing of, of the various services that go with that, and subtract that out from that 5%. So, you would no longer receive the full 5% in terms of revenue that you're currently receiving as, as an entity. So, that's a real danger to a lot of particular cable entities across the Commonwealth and across the country, particularly here in Foxborough, where this group is so active, that this would be a real drain on resources. And, and the state association sees this as one which is very concerning to them, because if that opportunity exists where they, they take away their revenue, that means that could be a drain back onto the cities and towns to provide revenue to help support the local cable station. And with the fact that, that newspapers are assigned to disappear, and becoming less and less of an, of an, of an opportunity for people to get information, it's concerning that we're now looking at ways that we could be reducing the opportunity for us to have cable in the community as well. So, that is a real deep concern across the country, not just here in Massachusetts.
And I'll add one other thing. Part of the language in there would seem to give the cable companies the ability, without your authority and without your say-so, to, to provide add-on services that they deem are not truly cable services, using their right-of-way access, so, and, and providing other equipment to serve other aspects. We have to keep in mind that the internet and wireless is where everything is going to go, and there's a, there's a big question of what happens. What's the difference between the cable and the Wi-Fi or the wireless? And if, if they're able to draw the cable back from your house to the pole and it's Wi-Fi from the pole to your house, are they even obligated to us any longer? And, and there is, there are a lot of technologies out there now, kind of mini sites that they can put on, on poles if they deem to have the authority to do that. That could ultimately just cut us out of that. And, and as, as Bill pointed out, our community in particular, we have a magnificent, magnificent Foxborough cable access. They do things that are absolutely amazing. Their, their production level is, no one surpasses that, and we don't want to lose that. We don't want to have to have them counting pennies to see what they can do for the town. So, I turn it back over, sorry.
Anybody on the board?
I just want to say, it, it sounds like it's the 11th hour coming here, but kudos to Mike and the Board and all the volunteers. You, you did get this out early on social media. I know a lot of people are writing on your behalf to the legislation ahead of the Selectmen on this, so thank you for doing that tremendous job that you guys do, all of the, all of the volunteers and the Board. Very, very, very active. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Do we have a single copy to sign? If, if you, you should have one, but I have an extra. Thought that might be a...
Would we want to take this draft letter and put it on tablet head, or is it fine the way it is?
Well, actually, it's the, it's the comments thing that actually gets filed.
Okay.
That's the head, that's the, has the signatures.
That's this one?
Yes. I'll pass one up to you.
Yeah, we have, if we have.
We have. Just didn't know if there was an original that we should sign. No, they're all effectively originals. This day and age, everything seems to be an original.
Yeah, I have no issue at all supporting this, 110%, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Do you want to just sign it now? Are you, are we mailing it in, you mailing it in?
No, if you would, if, if you all will sign it this evening, Mike will take care of, of making sure that gets filed tomorrow.
Yeah, start down there and pass it.
Thank you very much. And, and as you pointed out, Jim, Mike has done an unbelievable job of, of staying in front of this issue. And while it seems like 11th hour, it really came up as an 11th hour kind of thing for, for our attention. There seems to be new developments all the time on that, and Mike is constantly sending me emails and saying, "This is what just happened," and we try to stay ahead of that.
I tested it as well, that this is, came out, this was a regulatory change in the past few weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, and you, they, they, that's what they do, is they post these regulatory changes, and, and they think that nobody's going to pay attention, and for the most part, people don't. But fortunately, there's people like Mike and others that actually watch what they do and, and measure how it's going to affect us.
Yeah. Again, Mike and, and the whole committee, thanks for everything you guys do. You're always a staple at every single event, so no matter what it is, we appreciate it.
Since I do have a few minutes, I, I will advance to the, the status of the negotiations. It, it was no secret as to the position that we were taking on behalf of the town and the licensing with Comcast. If you look back to what the, the public hearing we had in February, we made it very, very clear that we were not hiding anything. We told them that we wanted to have high-definition channels and electronic programming guide in addition to the other three, other things. And that's the way we've conducted the, the negotiations, and I'll tell you that we told them that after that. We've sent them a letter and said very straight up, "We are willing to negotiate on a very rapid pace and get this done if you're interested." And now, we've waited, and we've waited, and we've waited. So, I can report that through, we have, we have a, a outside counsel that's a consultant to us that you folks pay for. We try to use him very, Bill Solomon is the fellow's name. We try to use him very, very sparingly, because we know there's a cost associated with it, and we obviously can leverage the fact that I'm also an attorney and familiar with contractual relationships, to not use him except for purposes of some of the negotiation-specific things that are just regulatory and ultimately the final language that gets presented to you for approval. But, but part of the information that we got from him is that there has been some progress with other towns on the, on the HD. Revere, for instance, has a deal, but they were told that we'll agree to it, but they're going to have, they're going to have to wait 13 months, and then another town, it was, "Well, we'll give it to you sometime in the next three years." Whereas, other providers like RCN, who doesn't come to play in Foxborough, they're already at a point of giving their consumers three HD channels and electronic programming. So, the reason that this is the primary issue for us is that HD, I'm sure anybody and everybody who's listening at home is probably, watching at home, is watching on an HD television. They've been around for 10 or 12 years at a minimum to everyone. You can't even buy a television that isn't HD, but Comcast doesn't permit us to broadcast in HD. 4K is the, the next thing. That's already out, and as I'm sure Mike could tell you, 5K, which is going to be the greatest thing in the world, we're told, because it's 10 times the speed and bandwidth and everything else, that is already being implemented. I have clients that do this for a living, and they're already installing 5K technology in locations. So, we are now beyond obsolete with the HD, and it is our position that they must give us that. And if they will not, one of the things that we'll discuss when we come back in a month or so, is the process that we'll go through in public hearings to have them explain why they won't do that. And I, and our position to this Board is, I think that we, we must be hard and fast on, on that aspect. It's a position we've taken from minute one. We have not hid any, hidden anything from them. We didn't play any games. We told them straight up, following, during and following that February, um, public hearing. Part of the reason, I mean, I, I understand they're concerned about costs associated with rolling it out to all towns. I'm sensitive to that. I represent enough businesses. I understand the concept of business, what kind of investment it takes to do these things, return on investment, all those, all those other aspects. But Foxborough is in a particular situation that they should actually be jumping to this opportunity. We're a high-profile community. We've already got all of the infrastructure, literally. We're at a point where all we'd have to do is flip a switch, and we're HD. All the equipment that, that is purchased is HD. We're, while this may be a little more technical, that we're, you know, we, we already have the fiber-optical lines right to the head. It's there already with, I, I don't, I don't know how much work it takes to finish that, but I'm sure Mike will tell you that it's probably a weekend's worth of work to flip the switch and make this happen. So, it's, it's absurd that we don't have this. It's absurd that they're not stepping up and saying, "You know, you're right. Let's figure out a way to do this." So, that's kind of where we are. We're very disappointed that they haven't responded to us and given us a position. They haven't said yes, and they haven't said no, but their, their failure to respond was clear that they were just not going to negotiate this. failure to respond was clear that they were just not going to negotiate this, not at the present time.
Is there an equal push for the electronic programming? So when you turn it on, it just doesn't say Local 1. You can actually see?
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, that actually came up at my house just before I left to come here today. My mother happens to be up visiting from now until Thanksgiving. My wife says to me, what do I have to speak into the Comcast thing to get the local programming? I said, funny thing, you mentioned that. You can't. And that's part of what we're talking about. So we just go to the bottom and start to work up, and you'll see the Local 1, Local 2, and Local 3. It's absurd that in this day and age, that that's the reference that people have to have to try to figure out what's on Foxborough cable access. So we view that as, there has to be both, HD and the electronic programming guide. No reason not to.
Thank you.
When's the contract up?
October 2019. So we anticipate, following this, we'll end up having a meeting with the committee and determining what the very next step is, though I suspect we will send a letter to Comcast saying, would you please now take a position? One way or the other, just tell us what your position is. And then we'll react to that. I don't expect them to just say yes. There might be something in between if they say no to the HD and electronic programming guide. Then we'll come back and let you folks know what the schedule of events is, if you will. And I think that we'll ultimately have a more detailed presentation with the invitation for Comcast to come and participate, or at least observe. I don't know that they often participate, but we'll make sure that they're aware of it and can come and participate if they wish, so that we can try to flush out that issue and see if we can advance this. We've been ready, willing, and able to have the deal done already. All they had to do was step up and agree to talk about these issues.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's clear that both Verizon and Comcast have known that this was going to be an issue at the FCC, and that they were waiting purposely for this to happen so that they wouldn't have to respond to requests that are coming out, which are reasonable requests, by the way, except for the fact that if they don't have to do that, they won't do it. It's as simple as that.
And then there was the legislation also in Massachusetts that was attempting to force their hand. It sounded promising for a while, but it didn't pass, or it got stuck in committee and didn't come up for a vote. It's politics. I don't know the background conversations there, but they are more than aware that it is a significant issue. And I can appreciate that they don't want to be forced into it. But when we're presented with the perfect opportunity to now move forward, we think that Foxborough presents as that perfect opportunity.
All right, well, thanks for the update.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for everything.
Chairman, probably could take a vote to approve that testimony?
We just signed it.
We'll consider that done.
Thank you very much. Thanks. All right, next up, Chief Baker.
How are you, sir?
Good evening, everybody.
Policy on patrol dogs retirement.
So we were approached by Sergeant Chamberlain, who's been a longtime canine handler for the department, about his intention to retire his canine. And I collaborated with the town manager and with legal counsel to make sure that we were prepared to dispose of that relationship, retire the dog in accordance with Massachusetts law. And as a result of that review, we determined that under 30B, we really needed to have a policy to guide the retirement of canines and the process by which we turn them over to the handlers generally, who want to take, you know, possession of the dog as a pet after it retires from service. And the good news was that we had another young officer who was interested in the canine program, and we identified a grant that allowed us to acquire a new dog that will take the place of John Chamberlain's dog. So the policy is intended to guide the disposition of these retired canines in the future. And attached to the policy is an agreement, which I don't believe we've ever had in place either, that just articulates what the responsibility of the parties are when the dog gets turned over from the town to the handler and the handler resumes all responsibility for the canine once that transfer has taken place. So with John Chamberlain's dog going out and the new dog coming in, John had asked us to target the transfer of Marley to him on or about the 24th of November, which is what this agreement reflects. And we wanted to ask the board to both adopt the policy for handling this transfer and future transfers and approve the transfer of this particular canine to Sergeant Chamberlain in recognition of his years of service with this dog and to this program.
Okay. One thing I don't see in the policy, and just a clarification, is Marley aged out?
Marley is aged out, yeah.
Okay. So is that what determines we're retiring?
Yeah, generally either aging out or decline in the dog's skills because of the age or an injury. Those are generally the things that result in this decision being made.
Okay. So a new dog comes in, and if that dog had an injury in a year or so from now, it very well could be, it gets retired from police duty?
Correct.
Okay.
You now have a policy to address that?
Yeah.
And if the handler does not want the dog, then it would revert to the chief to figure out?
Correct. And I'd work with the administration. It's interesting, under 30B, to talk about a dog as a piece of property, but it's in essence surplus property that the town's invested time and money in. And so it's an unusual piece of property. And obviously, we'd want to see the dog that a handler chose not to take possession of find a good home and spend, you know, comfortable retirement as a pet for somebody that was interested in taking that pet on. So this kind of dog, obviously, and canine handlers, they're a large, very connected group. So my expectation is that somebody from this world would step forward and say, you know, if John doesn't want to take the dog or can't handle the dog for some reason because of something going on in their family, that I will. And so I'd expect that other people would step up in accordance with this policy, and we'd find a good home for a dog under that circumstance.
There's actually volumes of books written on this. It's usually not an issue. I mean, there's people that align.
Confident it isn't. You can see the reaction to the guide dog that came in tonight, who was sighing. I thought he was sighing on my behalf of being late on the agenda like I am again. That's my interpretation of the dog wine. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, and this was all worked out with town council?
Yeah, exactly. It was interesting because council had never seen this tenant transaction before. And so it was something that we really had to do a little bit of checking on to make sure it was done right, because it is property. And we can't just hand it over to someone. It has to be done, it should be done properly so that there's no liability on the person or the town.
Okay. So we need to make a motion to approve the policy?
And then a second one, to transfer the ownership of Marley to John?
I think both motions would be.
Okay. All right. So the first one, move to approve Foxborough police policy for the disposition of retired police dogs, police department patrol dogs.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
And then second, move to transfer ownership of canine police Marley to Sergeant John Chamberlain for the sum of $1.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion?
Part of that motion, you'd like to waive the dollar?
Okay.
Why is the dollar the?
I think it's a legalese transaction fee.
John can afford the dollar.
Already committed to paying it on his behalf.
I'll take up a collection. We'll do it.
Motion made. Second. We decided Officer Chamberlain can afford the dollar to the town. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Marley and John. Yes, sir.
... comment on service dogs. This happens often in the military, especially overseas, when a military service dog is taken out of service because of age, injury, what have you. The connection from the handler and the dog is so tight that often the handler to bring that dog back to this country, you know, incurs the expense themselves as the dog is retired. So this is significant. I'm glad to see that the board has voted.
Yeah.
Just to go back to Sergeant Chamberlain.
My daughter trains or had trained service dogs for veterans, and two of them passed, no problem. The third one flunked out. It made through all the training and then just flunked out. So she had first right of refusal, you know, to get a fully trained black lab that is phenomenal for zeros. But you're right, the dog has an attachment to the handler. It makes the most sense. All right. Selectmen's update. Want to thank Matt and Mike and the rest of the community for a great Veterans Day ceremony yesterday. It was very well-attended, great speaker. It was quite the story he had. So thanks again. I know Matt had everything to do with it, and you had little to do with it, so.
As always.
Yeah. And then I also want to thank the Kraft family and the VFW and anybody else that took part in the wall, whether it was either going to pay, you know, tribute to those 58,000 names or to talk to the veterans there, stand guard. It was very impactful having that in Foxborough for this weekend. And then one other thing, thanks to the whole community for kind of stepping up and reaching out to the VFW in their time of need. And I was talking to Warren yesterday, the commander, and he said the outpouring from the community has been phenomenal. So anybody else have any updates?
I have two with the Nippon City Reservoir information. I got a text from Rec. He talked to the LSP, and the LSP feels that the state has 45 days to get back to us. And that figures to be around December 17th or so. And the other thing is, there was an interesting Facebook letter written by the Nippon City Watershed. Now, that was that woman that came up a little bit later. I forgot her name. And she wrote a very strong letter, you know, backing us and what was going on. But yes, there was a Facebook letter that I just got a couple hours before I came here. The title is Schneider Electric Looks to Shackle Foxborough With Nippon City Reservoir Contamination. And a really pretty good letter. I'll pass it around or give it to you to maybe forward to everybody to take a look at. But that's a really kind of a neat follow-up that she did in response to what Schneider wants to do with shutting down the whole process.
Anybody else on the board? All right, Bill, town manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris, I also too want to thank Mike and Matt for the work that they did in putting the Veterans Day ceremony together yesterday. As usual, the ceremony went like clockwork and was performed very professionally, thanks to the seniors as well, the surrounding seniors who do a terrific job every year. It was done professionally and tastefully and out of true dedication to the veterans community. So thank you for doing that. I just returned from the National League of Cities meeting held in Los Angeles, California last week. Meeting was extremely well-done and was very helpful. And by the way, what I saw out there is extraordinary in terms of the damage that's been done by the fires out there. It's just extraordinary. I mean, nearly 7,000 homes destroyed, entire city, entire city has been wiped out. And it doesn't appear that there's any real closure to that coming up anytime soon. It looks like there's about 30 or 40% containment at this point. So they still have some work to do to get that under control. That was about 10 miles north of where I was. So that was, you could actually smell the smoke in here. It was that close. So the issue that was being discussed quite extensively was the issue of affordable housing. And affordable housing is not an affordable issue anymore. It's really now a sustainable housing issue that we all need to address. If not addressed proactively, it will become a big issue not only for this generation, but for generations to come. I'm working with Mike Johns, Paige Duncan, and Nick Riccio to help start a conversation with the community on how we can best address this important issue as a town. We want this to be a solution that comes from the community and not from us. We will help to facilitate it, of course, but this past week was helpful for me to see how big this issue has become across the entire country. Richly, every state in the country was talking about this challenge, and we looked at some very creative ways to try to address it. So it's going to be something that we really have to think about long and hard, because one of the things that I thought was quite striking to me was that the National Association of Apartment Builders noted that there's a shortage of about 4.6 million units that need to be built by 2030 or to maintain the pace with the need in the housing industry. And that's just apartments alone, which tells us that there is a, and the thing that was mostly concerning about that was the fact that there were also some of the most restricted developments occurred with the apartment community. And so that's just apartments. So let alone the single housing and the townhouses and condominiums that are being considered, that have to be figured into that mix. So that's a really big concern, and we're going to have to start looking at that for all the generations coming forward. Second, and third rather, is the, I've had several discussions with Chief Baker, with town council, Representative Barrows, Senator Feeney about the CSX freight train concerns that have been plaguing the community for the past few years. While the town does not control the rail lines, we do take exception to the actions of CSX for blocking intersections and limiting access from various locations throughout Foxborough. Representative Barrows has arranged for a community update on this topic for next week on Monday night at the New Hampton Inn located off Foxborough Boulevard. The meeting is expected to start around 6:30 PM, and the public is welcome. Several representations were made to the community back in June of this year, and now needs a time for an update. It will be interesting to see what has been done since that last meeting and what actions are still needed. I'm told that the actual transfer switch has still not been installed, which was part of the million-dollar update that was supposed to be done to install those tracks. And that's still plaguing the ability for the trains to be disappearing from the backyards of those residents that have been living in that area. So we also have concerns about the fact that last week the trains actually blocked a number of intersections. And if that happens again, we actually consulted with legal counsel on what actually we could take to do that, to address that. Because that's a very serious safety matter. It was one thing if they blocked one intersection, but they blocked several intersections last week, and that was a dangerous scenario. I'm told what happened was that there was, an engine had actually failed in the process, and the train was actually too long. And as a result, the train stalled on the tracks, and that caused a significant delay. That's unacceptable to us. And it shouldn't be something that, it should be something that we can address. And it's a complicated legal matter because the railways have some level of sovereignty. But this is a public safety matter when stuff like that happens. I think we're going to, we'll try to pursue it if we can next time that that happens again. Hopefully, it doesn't happen again. And finally, tomorrow, we will be beginning with the Department Heads to go over the fiscal 2020 budget process. I met earlier today with Chairman Mitchell, Chairwoman Dring of the AdCom, Mr. Scollins and Mr. Johnson helped finalize the budget calendar for the upcoming year. The meeting was very productive, and we were able to agree on a review process that is inclusive of all parties, and will provide greater opportunity for discussion with this board to provide greater clarity for the advisory committee. I will send along the latest draft of the calendar following input from the Department Heads at our mental meeting tomorrow morning. So we made really good progress today. I thought it was a really good discussion. I appreciate Chris leading that discussion this afternoon. So we're getting closer to getting that process moving forward.
You'll send that new draft calendar out tomorrow?
If I, yeah, we want to get it out and get some input from them, and then we'll get it out to everybody.
Chris, through the chair. Going back to CSX for just a quick second, Bill, because I think we've all gotten the emails and watched with our jaws down on our tables, you know, the claim that goes on when they're going across, they're just sitting across the track for, across the roads for hours at a time. And it really scares me and baffles. I'm glad you brought it up, because I meant to bring it up earlier on this selectment, that somewhere along the line, the chief of police or the chief of fire can't do some sort of cease and desist for public safety. You know, when it's crossing Spring Street, there's no other way around without going through Mansfield.
Right.
It just...
We did do some legal research on it, and apparently there has been some cases where if it causes a significant public safety situation like that, where they block intersections, where public safety can't maneuver back across the town, that actually... where public safety can't maneuver back across the town, that actually, the track actually bisects the community. That's a significant problem if it's not, if it's left for too long. So obviously, it was a huge concern before too, but there was always that ability to get around that, even though it was a major inconvenience for the folks that were there. It didn't block multiple intersections. There was only maybe one, maybe two at the most. This covered several intersections this last time.
I gotta say, I've seen the videos. I think we've all seen it. If you go out there at 2:30 and 3:00 in the morning and you watch it 75 feet away, the vibrations, the smell, the noise, the darkness, it just continues. My heart goes out to those people. And I don't know what the solution is, but having gone to that first meeting when the answer was, well, it's the trains you can't, you know, the police and the fire can't intervene. I don't know what the solution is, but those people down there are absolutely furious.
Yeah, I can't say they blame them.
Yeah, and as if it's not bad enough, I feel like now having the second rail and having trains sit on it, which was specifically promised, is like an insult to injury. Yeah, it's an additional kind of slap in the face. That's really tough.
Which was not supposed to happen. And actually, they'd made that comment to representation of everyone at the meeting, so I can understand they're even more gravely concerned about it.
I know Jay and Paul are just totally frustrated as well.
That's exactly right. I mean, I know that they have tried repeatedly to try and reach out to them. We're actually getting Congressman Kennedy involved in it now because it's on a federal level. CSX is not feeling nearly as responsive as they should be in this situation, and it's very, very, it's disappointing at best to hear, to get no response from that company.
So, Chris, you know, if we've done the research and we can find them, and we just had that big problem, why are we not finding them? Why are we waiting until next time?
Well, we would, it has to, once it's occurring, that's when you can do it, all right? But if it's not occurring, then you can't do it. But it hasn't happened since that day, to my knowledge, that they haven't blocked the intersection. As far as being on the tracks, the thing that's disturbing to us is why the train, the switch has not been in place. Because that was supposed to be done as part of the entire upgrade when that was done. And that would help move those trains further into the rail yard, into Mansfield. So that's a piece that we need to have answers for.
One other thought, and I haven't gone down at 2 o'clock, but it seemed pretty noisy just on the videos alone. You know, we've got people taking samples of noise at a concert. What about samples of noise down there? Is there something from that angle we can do that it's a noise pollution issue that's affecting the town and the community?
I'm not trying to minimize that, but I think that would be a difficult thing to overcome with the laws and regulations that allow the train to go through town. It's just, there are some things you can do if it's causing a public safety nuisance or challenge.
But there's a difference between the train going through the town and the train sitting across a number of, or at least one crossing for five or six hours.
I'm not in a position to answer that question.
No, I'm just throwing it out there.
But it's a fair question to ask, perhaps, it's a good question to ask next week. But I just want to make sure the board was aware that this is, that Representative Barrows has put this meeting together for next week, and if you'd all make it, it would certainly, it's good to support the neighborhood, of course.
Absolutely.
Can we post that as a selectmen meeting?
Certainly can.
Yeah, I'm sure we're all going to go. Good idea.
That's all I have.
That's right. You're sitting in the middle.
All right, that's it, Bill?
That's it.
All right. Assistant Town Manager update?
I only have two quick things. After a long and productive process, we did make an offer to a veteran services officer. At this meeting, I cannot yet announce the person's name. They have not, they were giving notice to their employer.
This week.
This week. So at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we will introduce the new VSO. But I think that would be a great relief to Mike, a great addition to the team, and we look forward to introducing you to this person.
Just so you know, the person was at the ceremony yesterday. So it was nice to see that.
Yeah. And the second thing is, we are with Roger Hatfield intending retirement. We're in the process of working out the details of an assessment center for the position of fire chief. A consultant's coming in this week to work out the final details, and then the assessment center will be held at the end of November with the internal candidates. It's not going to be a worldwide search. We have two really good candidates, so. That will be one of the next transition items that'll be taking place, so.
What's the timeline on all that? I mean, I know Roger's retirement date.
So the assessment center would take place November 30th. Because it's not a civil service position, we should have results within a week, and then the transition can start immediately. They'll have probably 30 days to work together. I mean, work together anyway.
They've been more or less working together with them since for a while, so I see.
In the new role, so the timing should work out just fine.
Mike, do you have anything?
Just a couple of brief things. The Kraft Group did do the hard work of bringing the Vietnam Moving Wall to Foxborough, which is no easy task, especially over Veterans Day for four days. And they reached out to my office, which I in turn reached out to the American Legion and the VFW, and they staffed that over the four days, along with the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, along with many members of my association across the state. So I just want to reach out and thank the folks that did provide guidance and staffing, you know, day and night for those four days. It's much appreciated. And I want to echo and follow on with what Bill mentioned about the housing, which is a crunch across the nation. And what we've talked about is, we think there is a need out there, but we want to turn it over to the residents, as Bill mentioned. And what we're seeing nationwide, and particularly in this community, is that folks who grew up in this community often cannot afford to stay or come back and live here when they're employed. And also, folks who have lived their lives in this community, when they're ready to downsize, that there isn't something available for them to stay here other than public housing. So that's something that our team of four is looking, as Bill mentioned, to start a dialogue and turn that dialogue and decision-making over to the residents. But we think, we see something there on the two ends of the bell curve as you look at the ages, and we'd like to see what the residents think and maybe propose some solutions that folks on the younger and older end of the demographic scale may be able to stay in this community that they love.
I think what's, one thing that's particularly important is that the term affordable housing is really not a good term, because I think that term actually threatens, is a threatening term to many people. And it's one of the things I actually mentioned when I was away last week at one of the conferences, and said, we should probably turn our attention towards using the term sustainable housing, because that's not a threatening term, but that means everyone's involved in that discussion. And if the people think it doesn't affect them, take a look at the next generation, because they're going to be ones affected by it just as much as everyone else. So I think it's really important that we have the conversation and be inclusive of everyone's thoughts in this discussion, and try and neutralize the concern and threat that people have about what housing means, because it's our obligation to the next generation as to how we can help them.
I think somebody had, some group to have at the table. It's nice to have the municipal and the residents, but you know, you look at the, it used to be called Section 8, then it was low-income housing, now it's affordable housing. No matter what you call it, it's going to be affordable for the people, but it's going to be, it's going to make sense to the developers. So you could have all the best ideas in the world, but unless you're the landowners that can make money off of it. And I've seen affordable housing get built, and everyone loves it, and then everyone moves in, and they're not residents, they're outsiders coming in. So it's a very complicated.
It's a very complex issue.
It's a topic.
But I don't disagree with anything you've said, Jim. The one thing that everybody seems to agree on at the discussions that we had last week was that density is extremely, is the number one issue that we have to address, because there's only so much land. And if you don't address the density issue to a point where it makes sense both for the community as well as the people moving into it, you're not going to have much of an answer. It's just, it is what it is.
And Jim, you make a very, a great point, and that is about building stuff and people moving in and then, you know, not really meeting the need. And we're looking at it a little bit differently, and we do want to turn that conversation over to the town.
Right.
But the way we're looking at it is, these are Foxborough people that grew up here and that want to get a job, want to stay here, go to college, or go out in the service, or whatever, get employment, and they want to stay in their town, as well as people when they downsize wanting to stay in this town. And you're right, but some of the people that need to be in that conversation are the developers, the real estate folks, as well as some of our really important corporate partners. Snyder, you know, with their technology, the craft within the service industry, those are folks that, you know, they have employees that need a place to live, and they could be Foxborough people that stay here, live and work. It's also addressing our transportation issue. You know, when somebody can live within five or 10 miles of where they work, that's a great thing. You're addressing some of the road and community issues.
The road impacts as well.
Yeah. So it'd be a great conversation to have, and love to see people from all aspects.
Well, I'm an empty nester with a four-bedroom colonial, so let's get going.
There you go.
But you're just, you're just a symptom of the situation, Chris. And it goes across the board.
We've talked multiple times about downsizing, but it's like, okay.
Where you gonna go?
Where you gonna go?
Where you want to be?
And it's a discussion we have every single month with the seniors, every single month. You know, so, and it's not an easy issue, but we can't just turn our back to it. I think it's something that we as a town need to discuss and find out what is an acceptable option. And it's not everybody's going to agree with it, but I will tell you that the more people try to embrace it and address it collectively, not from us, but from them, meaning the community, I think that it'll be more receptive.
And changing the terminology to something more appropriate, as Bill mentions, from affordable, which people think of, you know, one thing, to sustainable and appropriate is different, because there are folks that certainly are well above what might be the term affordability or affordable, that cannot, you know, they don't have the funds to downsize or stay in this community, and so they're actually, you know, above that affordability, but still can't stay in their community.
Look forward to the conversation.
Anything else there?
Just unrelated, but kind of related. Fire station, police station, we talked about apartments and any update or status?
We've had, suddenly, we've had some couple developers express interest again, so we're going to revisit the issue again. We're not going to let go of it. It's not going to, not going to want to just backburner it. It has to be something we have to address. And I'm actually going to, I get an update from Paige in that tomorrow, so. But she's had a couple people reach out to her within the past few weeks, so which is good. Keep my fingers crossed.
We've got a couple of action items to finish up, I think.
Yeah, just a couple more. So move to accept gift donation of $610 from multiple donors in memory of Donald Phelps.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
And then a second one, same thing. Move to accept gift donation of $380 from multiple donors in memory of Donald Phelps.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Right.
Move to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from October 16th, 2018.
Second.
I'm going to abstain. I was not at that meeting. Motion made second, but.
All those in favor? Opposed?
And one abstained.
Move to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from October 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Right.
Thanks to me, I'd have keeping those up to date.
Yeah.
And accurate, too.
Right.
All right.
Two, Sharon?
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Right.
Night, everybody.
Good night.